So, here's the mic. So they have to come to the mic and speak. So they should be filing out and sort of lining up as they can.
Do you think for the first to take the mic? To stand up and then to pass it and each, everybody stands up with the mic?
You can.
Maybe we waste less time?
Yes.
Le premier micro se lève, premier micro parle, passe le deuxième qui se lève, qui parle, qui passe le troisième qui se lève. Voilà.
So, can we take the mic off the thing and it'll still work, right? Okay, so I think, I think we'll pass it down. It's perfect. All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
We'll just lift it off and we're good.
Twenty-two, uh, twenty-three. Yeah, about thirty seconds per person. We try. Okay. Yeah, well, but. Yeah, I think we'll stand up. Okay. Okay.
So, so the first.
Oh, when was it? Oh, okay. Okay. Was it good, a great experience? Oh. Oh, I guess. For me, it is. Yeah, it was my favorite dream to come to eat with. No, I already met my mom in twenty nineteen also. Yeah, it was the same time and I went to New York City. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, after. Then I went to New York City and it was a really great experience. Yeah, it's not. Now it's the real life, but in New York City, there are. Yeah, we're in charge of this event, but we, I will be in charge of this event. I hope we will be. We have a good time to be because we have ten minutes, we have twenty-two minutes. Some of us speak very much. So we'll try some to be good.
Going to see when they're ready to go, I will just get this handed.
Test.
Good evening.
Test.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Town Board for Monday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu, Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colosetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop. Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Ms. Genowith.
Here.
Ms. Owana.
Next item is approval of minutes.
I think there might be Chandra on the line.
Chandra, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Great. Let the record reflect that Ms. Bishop is here. We'll have approval of the minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those of course, same sign. That motion passes. We would like to add to this agenda, welcome to our visitors from Tionville. Could I have a motion to add this to this agenda?
Where are we adding it?
Um, under public participation.
Sure, I would move to add the presentation under public participation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, taken by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Danielle, did you have something to say? So tonight, we are delighted to have twenty-two high school students and their teachers join us from our sister city in Tionville, France. Our visitors are staying with families in Urbana and Champagne and are participating in a student exchange with University High School on the U of I campus. So I would like to say, bonjour et bienvenue à nos amis de Tionville. Nous sommes heureux de votre visite cette semaine. Vous avez un excellent itinéraire, University of Illinois, city of Urbana, voyage au musée de Abraham Lincoln on Springfield, notre capitale, plus le concert at Cranert Center, and football American, not soccer, football American. And bien sur Chicago. Did you have deep dish pizza? Chicago? No? Okay. Encore bienvenue maintenant, s'il vous plaît. Voudriez-vous parler en anglais ou en français? Merci. You have a presentation? English, that's fine.
All right. First, before we start, I would just like to introduce the three instructors who've traveled to Urbana from Tionville. We have with us Mary-Andrea and. That. Sylvia Gillette? Correct? No. Sylvia Luwet. All right. I already had that wrong. And Fanny Gillette. The students have prepared a slideshow program and each one is going to comment very briefly about their presentation, starting with here.
Hello, everybody. We are the Euro class of the Charlemagne High School in the city of Tionville in France. And today, we're going to talk about this beautiful project with Urbana. So we feel very proud to be in front of you today because it is a very big achievement and it is our work since about two years. So we are very thankful to be there in front of you today. And I let my class speak about this project.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Inez. As you may know, we come from Lorraine, a region in the northeast of France. This region has many culinary specialties, as well as beautiful landscapes and monuments, specialties such as Mirabelle, and symbols such as the flag and the chardon. Chardon Laurent. Lorraine is also home to Tionville Urbana's sisters.
Hi, I'm Charlotte. There is a legend about Lorraine's flag coming from the time of the knights. So during the taking of Jerusalem, the Lord of Pass, Lord of Honor, God of War de Bouillon, would have prayed with this sentence, "My God, if you want me to become king of Jerusalem, making so that I pierce with a single arrow these three raptors in the sky." According to the legend, he would have indeed pierced the three birds. It has been embellished by the poets and this remains a legend, but it's still a well-built legend for this flag of Lorraine.
Hello, I'm Niall. And I will talk a bit about our visit to Tionville. So as you know, our list of Charlemagne is in the city. It's surrounded by a lot of point of interest. We have a museum, whose name is the Tower of Pli or the La Tour Epte in French. She has many legends surrounding it. And we also have a place called the Puzzle, who is a bit like a library. But we can also have a lot of CG movie, book, and exposition in it. And most of students after school going there to work in a quiet place.
Hello, my name is Nathan and what I wanted to present to you today is my village, which is Richmond. And I also presented all the French villages because a French village is more a spirit than a place. It's spirit of help and friendship, which is typical in French villages. So I wanted to do that because I live in a village and it's unknown in other countries. And I hope one day you will go in French villages to see how is the spirits. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alana and I'm so happy to be in Urbana with you today. Paris, the capital city of France, will host the Olympic Games in July and August two thousand and twenty-four and is very busy preparing for the games. The French people are really excited to be hosting this competition. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Guillaume. Today is a particular day for us that we have been waiting for a long time. It's an honor to share with you our feelings after more than one year is in correspondence with a country whose friendship is very strong. These ten days will allow us to discover a new culture, but also to strengthen relationships between Tionville and Urbana. Thanks you a lot for your attention.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Alessio and today I represent you globally, the relationship between Urbana and Tionville. So Tionville is a beautiful city in France, located in the Moselle department. It's well-known for its lovely architecture, charming streets, and many, many, many monuments that you can find around. The, sorry. The relationship with Urbana is pretty recent. And it helped to promote cultural and business ties between the two countries, so France and the United States.
Hello, I'm Nina. This trip is a dream for us. We always wanted to go to the United States. It's a chance to be able to discover an American high school and students' life here, plus we will be in a foster care. We are very grateful to be here. It's an incredible opportunity that will be very beneficial for our future. This trip accomplished two year of where we made many projects like our blog or calendars that offered us the chance to be where we are. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jude. And tonight, I wanted to say that we had this last two years incredible chances to learn about the English language, the world around us and ourselves. But I think that the most awesome project we got to work on was the exchange with Urbana and its students because we were offered the precious and meaningful opportunity to speak and express ourselves about a lot of subjects. And I think that it's so rare, but essential for teenagers nowadays, so I'm really grateful for it. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Aurora. I'm really happy to do this school trip to the United States because this experience is not only amazing right now, but it will also help us in the future. Indeed, this trip will help us improve our English skills and knowledge. Will be useful if we want to study or work abroad. Also discovering a new culture and way of life will make us more open-minded and tolerant. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chloé. To me, this exchange with Urbana in the USA means a lot for my future because I wish to be a French teacher abroad, especially in an English-speaking country. So I see this exchange as an opportunity to discover another way of life, improve my English, and more importantly, learn more about other school systems. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy. And we are very pleased to go to your country, the United States of America, one of the biggest country in the world, and it was worth it, friends, friends. Since we are, we have a young age, we watch Hollywood movies, we enjoy American food, and we learn about your culture. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Malheal and the subject that I will address with you is Illinois. I did some research about Illinois, the state where we will stay for ten days. This is what I found. Illinois is located on the Midwest of the USA. The states that surrounded Illinois are Wisconsin, Indiana to the east, Kentucky in the, to the southeast, Missouri to the west, or even Iowa to the northwest. The famous city is Springfield because it's the capital city of Illinois, but the biggest city is Chicago. It is the third agglomeration in the United States. With our class of Euro section, we were lucky to be able to go there when we arrived.
Hello, I'm Agathe. You probably already know a lot about Urbana, but we wanted to do a little recap for thanking you to be so generous. So Urbana is located, as you know, in Illinois. There is forty thousand inhabitants. This is a university town, so that's why she is well-known for its dynamic side, but also for its strong history.
Hello, I'm Adrian Mueller, a student at Charlemagne School in Tionville. I'd like to tell you about my dream trip, which is to the United States. Ever since I was little, I've dreamed of the United States. And I've tried to be part of the culture, whether it's music, film, or history. And today, I'm lucky enough to be in Chicago, which is a magnificent city with captivating monuments, splendid terror, and a lifestyle that has its own charm. I'd like to thank my school for letting me experience this adventure with them. And I'd also like to thank you all for wonderful welcome. Thank you for listening.
Hello, I'm Adrian and I'm talking about my impression of Chicago. The United States and Chicago in particular deeply impressed me with very cultural diversity and dynamism. The windy city welcomed me with its magnificent architecture, lively. Live neighborhoods and vibrant art scene. This perfectly reflects the richness of American culture. My experience here has been truly positive and has allowed me to discover the energy and creativity that characterized this corner of the United States. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Oderlin and I'm glad that I can exchange with you today. I always wanted to travel in the USA because I have distant family living in the USA near Washington DC. But I never had any occasions to visit them, so that trip with my Euro class was the occasion to come in your country and it was one of my dreams. I'm lucky that I can be here. The visions and the expectations that I have of the USA have been filled with your wonderful city.
Hello, I'm Maureen. This trip represents for me a way to improve my English while discovering a new culture and a new country. Going on an adventure into the unknown makes us accomplish extraordinary things in an environment that is often very different from what we know. It's a real adventure that I can wait to experience. I'm very happy to be here because I realized that it's a huge opportunity, both in the future and now. I'm very grateful.
Hello, I'm Noli. And like everyone, like everybody else, I'm really happy and grateful to be with you tonight. I have one question to ask to the elected representatives of Urbana City. With my classmates here, we were wondering what does thrill you the most about our trip in your city? Thank you.
Well, I'm Mrs. Gillette. Axel is really nice, really, really, but she's very, very shy, so I'm going to speak for her. She wanted to tell you about the museum we saw this morning. It was really wonderful. We learned many, many things. It was very interesting. And we saw the library in front of the museum and we would have loved to see more, but it was a great opportunity to go to Springfield, thanks to Dennis and his association. Thank you very much.
If you want to see our different subject done during these three years, you can scan this QR code.
Can you share your presentation? We'd love to have that.
Hi, I'm Margot Miller. And we all wanted to thank the city, the community, the high school, and Mrs. Lopez for allowing us this trip and for making this trip as perfect as possible. And thanks the family for welcoming us so warmly. This is a dream come true. My comrades and myself are extremely grateful for this. Thank you.
And much credit goes to planning this trip here in the city by the French teacher Linda Lopez at Union High School. Please stand up, Linda. We're so pleased to have these people arrive and I appreciate very much the city council's support, continuing support of the Sister Cities Program. I think finally, it's really blossoming and there's many opportunities for exchanges in the future. Thank you.
And I believe the students asked us a question, so if any of the council members wanted to answer. They're all elected. James.
I do want to say this is, thank you for being here. This is special to me because a friend of mine who has passed, Kermit Harden, had a very special relationship with your, your village. He was honored at one point for being part of the liberating force that came there. And Kermit was the, Kermit Harden was the person who introduced me to Rotary, which is a service organization. And so it, you know, that relationship means a lot to me and having you here just reminds me of Kermit. Thanks.
Anyone else? Sharice.
I believe your question was, what is, being an elected representative, what does that mean to us or to? What is your, your visit? For me, it, it's, it's, it's amazing because when I was your age, I had the fortune, I had the fortunate experience of singing with a choir over in Europe. And I didn't get to, I didn't get to see, you know, like you guys got to be here for a few days. I got to see Florence for like three days or got to see Paris for about a week. And it was, but just exposing, being exposed, it makes a whole lot of difference, I think. And I'm hoping that you're being able to see how our representation is here regarding politics and so on and so forth, but not just our representation, but our flaws. If you've watched any television, any news television, I'm sure you've been able to experience that. So you get to see our flaws, you get to see our benefits, you get to see the good, the bad, and the ugly, is what I like to say a lot. And I'm really excited that some of you are, are so excited to be here because it is always, I think it's always a benefit to see and to experience other cultures and other, other societies, other, other ways that people can do, do their culture and their traditions and so on and so forth. So I welcome you with open arms and I do hope that many of you come back here to go to U of I. So, thank you for being here.
Danielle?
Your visit reminds me of being sixteen years old. And I had a French exchange student named Christelle who came to visit with me. And then I went to Paris and visited with her. And then I traveled all over France, avenue, Nîmes, Orange, Paris. There were many different spaces and I sketched it, all of the museums that I could find. I visited all the sculptures and all the paintings. And I went to college two years later to study fine arts because of my trip to France. I also got to eat some of the best food I had ever had. And so it's meaningful to me that you're here because I remember how that trip let me see my culture from the outside. And so I learned a lot about myself and what I was interested in, and it was a big part of my independence. So I hope that it is that for you as well. And I will also share that I'm going to be sharing this video with my niece who lives in Lille. My sister and my niece, two nieces live in Lille and they will be excited to see your trip here. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jaya?
Yeah, we're, we're all so excited. We've appreciated getting to see presentations and hearing updates about the Sister Cities. And it's nothing like having you all here in person. It's just really wonderful. And I think especially this timing of we're, we're celebrating the immigrants in our community. And so having folks visit us and getting to see what a diverse community we are here. This is just really wonderful for you to get to see us and for us to get to see you. Just echo what other people have shared is that's part of what makes, you know, the alliance between the US and France so great, right? Is the belief in democracy and getting those opportunities to continue to grow as nations that sometimes are too. challenges, but that it's a process and that communication is so incredibly important. So just very grateful that you're here and welcome.
Okay, well, again, thank you so much for being here. We will see you all for lunch on Thursday, just outside the city building. And we have gifts for you in the lobby when you leave. Merci. Have a great week. Just consulting on procedural issues here. So we do have to hold a public hearing on the Cunningham Township revised budget before we go on with the rest of the meeting. So we will continue the town board meeting after we have the public hearing. Is that adequate notice? Yeah. Yeah, it's been advertised. Okay. So I would like to call to order the public hearing of the Cunningham Town Board for September 11th, 2023. And this is to receive public input on the revised fiscal year 2022-2023 annual budget. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu, Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
All right, next item is public input on the Cunningham Township revised budget for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the town board? Okay, seeing none, this hearing is adjourned and we will reconvene the Cunningham Town Board meeting with public participation. Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the committee to verify bills.
Good evening. So this last month in the town fund, we had $43,537.22 in expenditures. In the general assistance fund, we had $133,569.67. Our total expenditures were $177,106.89. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the bills before you.
Is there a motion to approve the town fund and general assistance fund bills?
I move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Grace? Moved by James, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of officers.
I just have four quick things I want to say from the memo. The first is utility assistance is off the chain. So we went 63 households, 41 households, 50 households. That's the last three months. This is just, we have typically done, you know, no more than 10 any month before then, quite a significant expenditure. And we continue to look to kind of stop the bleeding. I am meeting with Scott Tess tomorrow to talk about opportunities to connect with the Solar For All programs that are available. I have seen, I've started to personally review a number of the larger bills to see what their electricity provider, who their electricity provider is, and how much they're paying for electricity. And in one case, and this was outside of Urbana, but we do fund families in Urbana schools, they were paying twice per kilowatt hour what is being paid inside. And so I'm really trying to get, trying to do some investigation around that piece and do a significant PR campaign around that. The second is that rental assistance is off the chain. So we have a very high number of rental assistance cases coming in. And that is typical at the end of summer, but I've given you the, you know, April was 26, May was 2056, June was 60, July was 65, and August was 51. So we're hoping to see that decrease a bit over time. The third is there is an opioid crisis in the United States and we're not immune to it here in Champaign-Urbana. And with Public Health, we did significant, two rounds of significant outreach through our street outreach team to distribute cans of Narcan, which can be used for opioid overdose. I want to thank Public Health for providing those and our street outreach team. The most recent distribution was 41 cans and I believe there was about that much the distribution before. So that's really important. You know, you don't have to be a user. Going to Public Health and getting a Narcan does not indicate that you are a user of opioids. What it means is that you're a concerned person in the community who wants to have Narcan available if somebody in your apartment complex or your workplace or in your life is using. So oftentimes it's the helpers who get the Narcan. So please do not be shy to go by Public Health and ask for Narcan so that you, it's very easy to distribute. It goes up, squirt it up the nose. It's very easy to use. I just want to point out that our food assistance is also off the chain. So essentially, we served 116 households last month, up from 80 in July, up from 78 in June. So we saw a 45% increase in food assistance. And then I just said at the end of the event, excuse me, at the end of the supervisor's memo, there's some lovely photos of our back to school event. Our next event is going to be a Harvest Festival at noon on Saturday, October 14th in the garden. And there'll be a lot of fresh vegetables and there will be a performance with words by the people who have received food and volunteers in the garden. So there's a performance that kind of knits together their stories and I will send out some information about that. I will say the DMV, it's after September 1st and the DMV is back to appointments only. I have given you information where you can make your voice heard about the DMV being closed. It's particularly important for homeless residents who are regularly having their things stolen and having to get new IDs to get anywhere in terms of housing, but also for seniors and people with disabilities. That's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Danielle? Okay. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. First item is ordinance number T 2023-09-004, which is an ordinance approving the Cunningham Township annual budget for fiscal year 2023 revised.
This is simply the actuals from last year. And because of state law, we needed to go through a public hearing process for those changes. So that's what's been before you for the last 30 days.
Any questions on the budget? Is there a motion? James.
I'll move approval of ordinance number T-2023-09-004, an ordinance approving the Cunningham Township annual budget for fiscal year 2023 revised.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is resolution number T 2023-09-006R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Solutions Grant for Homeless Services fiscal year 24.
Just briefly, this is a renewal grant. We've received ESG fundings first through the city of Urbana and this will be our second year. It has gone up slightly in terms of our allocation and it's specifically for emergency housing purposes.
Is there a motion for approval? Sharice.
I would move for approval for the resolution number T-2023-09-006R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Solutions Grant for homeless services, FY24.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by James. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is resolution number T 2023-09-007R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Housing Transitional Housing Grant for Homeless Services, FY24.
This is a new grant that we went after to expand emergency and transitional housing services. We were awarded in full $536,594, also from IDHS. I have included the grant agreement, the uniform grant agreement for the ESG grant. They do not have the one posted for ETH, so you're basically allowing me to sign a similar grant agreement. The dollar figure is different, but otherwise they use a uniform template. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no, oh, Grace?
Is this for, is this $39,000? Is that the amount?
No, it's $536,594. And it is for street and school outreach, emergency and transitional housing, and rapid rehousing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Moving to order.
Yes.
Did we have a motion for this?
You know what? I don't think we did. We were just zipping along.
We were just zipping through. Okay, well, let me move.
Just looked down and noticed there wasn't a motion.
Yeah, because I usually write it down. I'm like, wait just a minute. Resolution number T-2023-09-007R, resolution authorizing supervisor to sign an agreement with the state of Illinois for the Emergency Housing Transitional Housing Grant for Homeless Services, FY24, for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Now, will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Still yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes, also.
Okay, Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes twice, right? Okay, not really. Okay, last item is resolution number T 23-09-008R, which is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the University YMCA, the New American Welcome Center for Immigrant Services for FY24. And in your packet, you have both the resolution and the agreement.
Yes, and so I put an updated MOU in front of you. This is after, so a little bit of context, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, MMC, has an opportunity for municipalities to support asylum seeker services. Asylum seekers are folks who, in this case, are defined as people who have crossed the Mexican-US border and have undetermined legal status and are looking to adjust their legal status. So essentially, it's only for municipalities. It can't be, and it's an important opportunity of IDHS funding that has gone through the MMC. We saw this opportunity and approached the New American Welcome Center to do a primarily pass for their grant, although there'd be some funding for some of the services that we offer as well. And they were very excited. It requires us to have an MOU in place. It's due on Friday. The grant is due on Friday and the MOU must accompany it. So that's why it's important that it came before you. What you have before you as a MOU is actually a general framework for collaboration that could apply to multiple grant opportunities. For example, if we do not receive this grant opportunity, which we'll know by the end of the month, it's a very quick turnaround time, we intend to apply for other grant opportunities. So we've written it very broadly. And instead of putting a dollar figure, we say that essentially the specific deliverables, there's a set of services which are clear there, but the specific deliverables, timeline, and budget will be determined on a case-by-case basis with the grant. So those would be done in writing between the supervisor and their executive director and board. But basically, this framework needs to be in place for us to apply for that grant. I'm really excited that we can do this during Welcome Week. We've been in contact with the New American Welcome Center about some of the gaps that they have. They have a significant wait time for legal services. We've asked them to ask for dollars. Legal services are one of the things that can be supported with this grant. And so, you know, we've certainly seen the provider, the partner side of working with New American Welcome Center, which has been a great partner, but also is stretched in terms of their capacity. So anything that we can do to support the development of their capacity, we want to do that. And this MOU will allow us to do that. If it is approved, then the grant agreement will come back to the town board and you'll see that grant agreement with some of the specifics. I'm happy to answer any questions. You have...
Chris?
Do you know how much the grant might be?
We're aiming high. I don't have a final figure, but my guess is that, you know, we'll be asking for at least a quarter million between the two organizations. And most of that will be New American Welcome Center. But that's a guess. I'm still, we have a series of writing meetings to finish the pieces. I believe that they're going to have a hard time moving this much money, which is $42 million from IDHS specifically for asylum services. I think they're going to have a hard time finding people south of I-80 who are applying. And therefore, I think we're very well positioned and qualified to apply for this grant, to bring it to our community and continue to be a sanctuary city and a welcoming environment for immigrants.
Any other questions? Is there a motion, please?
Move resolution number T-2023-09-008R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with the University YMCA/ New American Welcome Center for Immigrant Services, FY24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the Cunningham Township Board, this meeting is adjourned. And we will proceed to our next meeting when the clerk is ready to go. Starts at 6:30. We noticed it for 6:30 in the event we got done time. We got to convene down here. We got to convene down here.
Are we ready?
Ready.
Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Township Board and the Urbana City Council. It's a joint special meeting for Monday, September 11, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Genowith?
Present.
Are there any additions to the agenda? There are none. Anyone wish to address this special joint meeting of the Town Board and City Council? Being no public participation, I need a motion to go into closed session for pending litigation issues pursuant to ILCS 120/2, Prence C, Prence 11.
So moved.
Moved by Jaya.
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Do we need a roll call on this, or can we... Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
The Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And just to confirm, Ms. Bishop, you'll be calling into the upstairs conference phone?
Is it the same access?
I'll text you the number, just in case.
Thank you.
Okay. We will be going upstairs, and when we come back down, this special joint meeting will be adjourned.
I'm just hanging on by a thread. I'm dangling by a thread. You know, just...
Okay, we need a motion to come back into open session.
So move.
Moved by James.
Second.
Second by Jaya. And Shonda, are you with us?
Yes.
Great, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
That motion passes. With no further business before this special joint meeting of the Cunningham Township Board and the Urbana City Council, we stand adjourned. Thank you. And we move on. When we get the sign, we'll move on to our final meeting of the night, which is the regular meeting of the Urbana City Council. Okay, I'll call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, September 11th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item is approval of the minutes of the May 22nd, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the May 2nd, 2022, 2023 meeting, minutes for the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any.
Mayor, do we need to remove the presentation?
Yes, that's, we'll remove that presentation. Public input. So we're removing the presentation from the Sister Cities group. That was done at a town board meeting earlier this evening. Public input, there's no one present for public input, so we will move on to council input and communications. Any comments from council members? Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committee. There are none. We'll take the committee of the whole report from James Quisenberry.
Thank you, Mayor. For the consent agenda, we have one item, Resolution Number 2023-09-079R, Resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA, grant for public arts program operating support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And then we had two items for the regular agenda recommended for approval, the first being ordinance number 2023-09-032, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One, omnibus.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I have a few questions since I wasn't here last week, which I appreciate the recommendation from fellow council members to put it on the regular agenda to allow for a little more questions and discussion for those of us who weren't here. I have a starting general question that has to do with the 1.5 million of the DCEO money. It seems to be that there's an impression that we've already decided and agreed upon using that money for fire stations. I'm wondering if the administration and staff, if that is your operating understanding, and if so, what that's based on?
We did two-by-twos with council members, and I think there was a general consensus that that was an appropriate use of the 1.5 for the DCEO grant. However, I would say that this is actually just being transferred into the CRNI fund, so you'll have another chance when the funding comes forward for the fire stations in general to decide if you want to keep that there or if you want to bond more and put, assign it to another facilities project.
And I will add that Brayden Belcher, did you get the email from Brayden? Okay, he answered your question earlier today.
Yes. So now here's my thoughts on those answers. So saying that we had two-by-twos and there was council consensus, my main issue with that is that's not my understanding of how we decide things in a democracy and that we need a public discussion and a vote from council and not pull aside in two-by-two meetings off the record. Also with that, I don't believe that I attended one of those. I believe I had COVID at that point and didn't get contacted about a makeup, so I don't believe I was involved in that one. And even if I were, again, I don't think that's the way we decide things. I think this was a big issue with a crisis follow-up co-responder team saying that we had two-by-twos as updates and then saying that that counts as approval. I don't think that's the way things are supposed to work. In the email that we got, I really appreciate the information reminding me that we discussed this on September 19th Committee of the Whole and then approved it the following council meeting. That was the last time that we publicly discussed this issue, and it was very clear in that discussion that we had not decided on the use of these funds. I think more time, if anyone else wants to re-watch the discussion, is great. Mary Alice asked specifically, what's the process from here? And we were told that council will still get to have input on what these funds are used for. We talked about doing it for equals grants potentially. Fire stations was brought up as one possible option by staff, but that was not the conclusion of that discussion the last time that we publicly discussed and voted on this issue. It was absolutely not decided and left that council will still continue to decide what to do with these funds. So I appreciate hearing that, you know, you say we'll have another chance to decide that, but I'm worried that we're already in this trajectory where it seems like the impression is that we've already decided to use these monies for fire stations and that then if it comes up, maybe we could do less. And I'm just concerned about that. I think that we still need to have the public discussion and council needs to vote and have discussions on how we're going to spend this money. And I'm worried that it's just getting slipped in automatically for fire stations, and once it goes into the CRNI fund, it's not going to be kept track of and we're not going to have further approval of what that money is spent for.
Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, the idea that council approved the use of this money for fire stations in two-by-two meetings, all I remember of that two-by-two meeting was being handed a piece of paper by Sheila Dodd telling me what the budgeted money was for. And they, the community development at the time, made the decision that the money would be used for fire stations. I was being told what was going to happen. I didn't agree to it. So, and my concern is that we approved community development capital improvement projects. That's what the resolution said. Not, you know, 1.5 to fire station. That wasn't what it was said, what was said. It was community development capital improvement projects. And looking at the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity's intention with these kind of funds, I just disagree that the spirit and the intent of that money to do infrastructure for low-income and moderate-income neighborhoods is to build government buildings. I just don't see that. That's why I'm very opposed to that money being used for fire stations. So as we go forward, however we go forward, that will be my position. Thank you.
Sharice?
Okay. I kind of understand what both of you are saying, however. Capital improvement projects means that we basically still have to maintain, we don't just maintain what's outside of the city. What, and when I say that, what I mean is what's outside of the building where we actually sit. We have to also maintain our infrastructure because it doesn't make any sense to have fire stations that are falling apart. Who do you think is going to come and work for our fire department? And FYI, both of the fire stations that are being, have been planned to be rebuilt are in neighborhoods where, I guess you would say, that's the lower, the lower, like, since we like to have to label everybody, the marginalized population of Urbana. One is on North Lincoln, which is in my ward, which is basically everybody thinks, because it's a black neighborhood anyway, that that's the lower part of the Urbana. The other part is, the other fire station is on Philo Road, and that also has been determined to be a particular socioeconomic strata of Urbana. We are building, it's not just a government building, it's a building where services, services come out of that building. Fire services come out of that building. People call the fire services for several different reasons. My mom fell down the steps. I can't wake my uncle up. Somebody's throwing up in the bathroom. Fire services are called. And, oh, fires. And it's, though it's not just a government building. And by the way, government buildings aren't meant to fall around, fall apart around the people that work with the government. It's not like we're building palaces. We're building services, and we're trying to keep those services up to date. You know, I, that's why, I guess I don't understand what the problem is because our fire services are important throughout this city. I really do not understand.
Carol? And then Chris?
So let me, let me just add a little bit of information here. So when we, when we got the DCEO grant and, and the initial allocation between the one and a half million dollars and the $500,000, then as a result of the two-by-twos and the consensus that we got, Tim reminded me, we put it in the capital improvement plan for facility improvements. That was, we got consensus and then we put the recommendation in and it was approved by council for facility improvements. Again, more generic than the fire stations. This budget amendment is to transfer the money from grant funds into CRNI, which is a generic pool of money. It still hasn't been specifically assigned to the fire stations. We do, when we show you a funding plan, we do talk about it as part of the funding for the fire stations, yet to be approved by council because we've been given direction to get as many grants as possible to offset the borrowing that we're going to have to do. And that doesn't mean that you've made the allocation, but given that we, we have gotten these grant funds and they are appropriate to this use, we're saying, well, here's grant money that could be used, and then here's the amount yet to be bonded. The whole funding plan for the fire stations has not been determined yet. So I just want to make that clear. That's, I don't know if you find that helpful, but you'll, you'll have at least one more opportunity to say how you want the fire stations paid for and with which money.
It's either grant money or we borrow. Grace, or no, Chris, you got a comment?
So the, the problem is, is that the money from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity is meant to benefit the people of the low and moderate income neighborhoods. That's what the money is intended for. And the money that can be used for the fire stations is endless money for debt. I mean, we're, the plan is to go into debt and borrow money to build those fire stations. So why are you taking money intended for low and moderate income neighborhoods? That's the problem I have with it. I would rather spend 1.5 million on a grocery store on Ward III. That's what I'd like to do. Okay?
We don't have anything to do with that. We don't, we don't, we do not lobby, we do not lobby grocery store developers. That's my point, as, as, as you and I.
Well, what, what, go ahead.
That's your comment. Grace, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. So I agree that this is a complicated issue, and I do want to have that discussion about how to spend these funds and if it's appropriate to use them on a fire station or not. That was my overall point, is that we have not yet publicly had this discussion and council approved on it by a majority vote. So I think that is a really important discussion to have, not tonight, but I think in the future, before we decide what to spend this 1.5 million on, I think that that is the conversation and the approval process that needs to be done at a later date. So I would like to motion an amendment to add to the language, which I'm open for recommendations for changes, of a section in the, therefore clauses, that the 1.5 million from DCEO will be earmarked for capital improvement projects requiring specific approval from council before any funds are allocated or spent.
Seconded.
One more discussion?
Well, no, we're, we're talking about an amendment right now.
Okay, so we need-
And I'm going to talk, speak to the amendment. I think that's not the way to approach this. I think the way to approach this, which is what I would have said if I had been recognized before additional talking was going on, is that the question here is, this is a budget amendment that has multiple dimensions. So because these, I think there's two bullets in here that, that are related to this, because these two items are causing a challenge for believing that we didn't have enough discussion on it, is it better to try to divide this question, which I'm not really excited about trying to do because it's an ordinance and it's a spreadsheet and so forth? Or is it better to send the, the whole budget amendment back to Committee of the Whole for that additional discussion? If, if it were possible to defy the question for this budget amendment and split this conversation off, I would recommend that's the amendment that should be going on at this point, or the question that should be going on at this point, as opposed to trying to create legislation on the fly to represent, you know, one particular approach or one particular desire that, that is coming up. You know, if, if the, if the city, if the operations can tolerate it going back to Committee of the Whole as a whole, we could, we could just move that it goes back to Committee of the Whole for next week for more discussion, like we could have had last week if we were all here. Or if it's possible, I don't know from the clerk, if it's possible to defy the question and split those two items related to the, the DCEO grant off so that we could pass the rest of the budget amendment that has no entanglement with this conversation, or maybe different entanglements depending on, you know, further discussion. So I'm going to vote against the, the amendment that I just heard because I think there's a, a better way to approach this from a standpoint and still address the concerns that there needs to be a deeper discussion on that particular item.
Carol?
Just for, if this is helpful, I think it would be good to separate off the item in total and that this conversation continue and reach a conclusion because there, the DCEO money has a deadline on spending it, which was always a challenge. And it, I believe the deadline is the end of June of 2023, four, sorry. Yeah, we already passed that. So there's a time sensitivity to it. And so that's got a, I think that's a legitimate factor for you all to weigh in as you decide how you want to allocate the money. So for what it's worth, I think it would be helpful to just take everything related to that out and we can, if you want to just remove it, we can bring another standalone, standalone item for it and just make that cleaner.
Does anyone want to speak to the amendment on the floor? It's been proposed. Grace?
I appreciate the discussion, and those were also things that I was considering and willing to amend my motion, or we can vote and shoot it down and remove. But I am willing to change my motion and I think if you second it, does it work? Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm saying I would for dividing the question and saying, return just this DCEO money amendment back to Cal and pass the rest of the budget amendment.
James?
Yeah, I, I think it would just be easier to strike these from it and have a new budget amendment come through dedicated to it.
I am willing to-
Because the, the way the ordinance is written, it's much easier to strike these two items from it than it is to rework the ordinance into two ordinances that we would then send one back.
So I am willing to withdraw my motion for amendment.
Second or agree?
I agree.
All right, we're back to the original motion. Sharice?
Okay, so in, in my opinion, since everybody's talking about discussion and how we need to do all that, then maybe what we need to do as well, since this, the amendment has been rescinded, and also regarding this particular ordinance, then if, if we, if we're sending, James, you're saying we send, we send this back?
I, I could tell you what I'm saying when, when I get a chance to get recognized.
Okay, because what I was going to say is that maybe we need to add the, this subject, this particular subject, and particularly regarding fire stations, as a sub, as on the agenda as a discussion for us to actually have open discussion about everything. And so we'll, we can get a better idea of what, you know, we can say it in public, we can say it and everybody, no one has to worry about OMA and all. one has to worry about OMA and all this other stuff when it's being discussed, because apparently this needs to be discussed amongst us all. And there are two people that are not, well, Chandra is here, but she's not here, you know, her voice is here. Mary Alice isn't here at all. And I think that maybe everyone needs to be present on some level, even if Chandra's voice is here, her lovely voice, but we need to have a serious discussion about it.
James, did you want it? And then I want to recognize...
I would move that we amend the current item under consideration to strike from the, it's basically the spreadsheet that lists the details, Exhibit A, strike the items related to the DCEO grant, which I don't have any other way to describe it as to, there's one item for moving it with the capital replacement fund as a revenue and one moving it as an expenditure. We would just strike those from the budget amendment, Exhibit A.
Second?
We have an amendment to strike the two items related to the DCEO grant from Exhibit A.
I could speak to that just briefly, the intent being that we remove it from the rest of this budget amendment, which has different things in it, with the expectation that staff would bring the second budget amendment of the year to us, focus specifically on that, as early as next week with the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. Chandra, I want to give you an opportunity. Did you have any comment?
My question is, could the 1.5, why couldn't the 1.5 be left within the Community Development Grants Fund until expenditure was decided whether it's going to be on fire stations and how much of the 1.5 will be on fire stations instead of putting all of it into the CRI?
James?
I was going to say, I assume the effect of my amendment that we're talking about right now would mean that it stays there in the meantime. So it will stay there, Chandra, until a different action is taken.
Well, I'm saying just without any budget amendment, like, why does it even need to move at all? Because it seems like this is going to be a longer conversation than even just next week.
Well, it may prove...
It becomes...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chandra. This is Carol, I'm just trying to respond. It may well be a longer conversation than the next couple of weeks, but if the council can come to a determination, then the money is available to spend and we agree that it's for fire stations. Otherwise, because we could, otherwise, we need to decide, I think sooner as opposed to later, now that we're talking it through, to make sure that the money is spent on time.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we have an amendment and a second. And the amendment was to strike, the motion was to strike from the Exhibit A, the items related to the DCEO grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the main motion, which was to approve ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for budget amendment number one. We have a motion and a second. Was there further discussion on the rest of that? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes.
Okay, the other item on the regular agenda is Resolution Number 2023-09-080R, resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from or paid with proceeds of an obligation to be issued by the City of Urbana, Illinois.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Grace?
Thanks, just a quick clarifying question, that this is for allowing reimbursement so they can be tax exempt for up to 10 million and that any bonds we do take out would come for another discussion and approval and things from there. Correct, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
No.
Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next, thank you, James. Next item is reports of special committees. There are none. Reports of officers?
Yes, I'm glad Tim's here tonight, not just to help me with that DCEO item, but I asked him to come back and take a moment during this reporting time to give you an update on Savannah Green, because there's a really good story of creativity and collaboration and just, I'm really proud of the folks at Public Works, and I know Tim is too, on how this is, how this is working out. So he put some slides together and he's going to talk you through what the latest is. Thanks, Tim.
Well, clearly I have a failure here already, but that's okay. We can talk through it. The picture here was just kind of an overview of the Savannah Green area. We talked about this extensively during the CIP and the reduction of work there and trying to still come up with something that works. What this picture would show you is just an overall patching map of the area and then as well as a green area that you don't see, but it was three, three of the legs of the alleys that we decided to go and do some, a pilot rehabilitation plan on, in addition to the patching that we programmed into the CIP. We got bids back recently for the patching that came in at about $150 per square yard for the Class B patches and the PCC joint and pavement. Those are different colors because the map showed them differently. But those are what you would envision as very much spot repairs. We would go cut out a panel of concrete, remove it, fully replace the full depth of that. They were just, and if you saw it on the map, you would see that they were just kind of sprinkled throughout. A lot of them were actually along the southernmost east-west alley there that had kind of consistent failures throughout it, and then others were through other parts of it. The green portions, I believe they were, oh, I think it's Michigan, there were three legs of alley just north of Michigan that we decided to do this rehab. They were probably three of the worst alleys that the options were trying to fully replace these things, which was kind of part of the original bid that we went out to and got $270 per square yard for doing a marginal fix, that we rejected those bids. What we've done now is we've done some, some different things there, which I'll go into on the next slide, but we did meet with the HOA at the beginning of August to kind of discuss this pilot plan in addition to the patching that we agreed to do within the CIP. The HOA was very supportive of the means and methods that we kind of proposed to use here and the, you know, additionally that we committed to kind of reviewing this to see how this is working and if it's going to work, we would then extrapolate it throughout there in future years. All of the full-depth patching will be completed within the original CIP budget by the end of October. They were marking those out this week and will begin work on that here in September and probably complete sometime in early to mid-October. The pilot plan was a combination of our Public Works operations staff as well as our annual surface treatment contract, getting our contractor that's doing our surface treatments engaged on that. And this, this all had to happen really quickly. We came up with the idea kind of mid to late July and the contractor was coming mid to late August. So that's why we engaged our Public Works staff to get them on with some of this advanced preparation stuff so that we can meet that timeline. Like I stated, the original concept around this that we rejected prior to the CIP was $265 a square yard. So a lot of this is major value if we can get it to last and the intent would be upon completion of these other spot repairs with these pilot programs, is we want to get all the alleys into what we'd consider maybe a fair condition or something comparable to what the rest of our network is because they are used very similar to roads. And, you know, really just try to put some, get something that is going to minimize this degradation that we can actually maintain regularly and affordably. So this slide, better pictures here, and I will blow this picture up because I didn't do that on the last one. This, just kind of walk you through it. We had pictures back in 2021 when we first started, well, when I was here originally talking about Savannah Green. We had some pictures of the existing degradation and what you can see is, you know, you see a lot of failed panels throughout this top 2021 picture. The 2023 picture is in a very near location to what that is and what you can see there is just, we had put down a bunch of just kind of temporary patching through there over the last two years, just trying to get something that would hold. What we'd come up with is doing kind of an advanced prep and you can see the Urbana Public Works prep team out there. We used essentially a low-grade asphalt mix to try to basically create a workable surface for us over the top of some of that failed concrete, followed by then a contractor seal coat here, which I'm not sure whether it's not picking up, but you can, I'll zoom in there a little bit for you. This is like a chip seal. You would see oil and rock and we did multiple layers of that over the top of this. And then the final product over here, this is what that alley looks like today. Very nice. We've heard a lot of positive comments back from the residents and the HOA where we're at today now. Ultimately, we're going to have to see how this holds up through the conditions, but at $30 a square yard, if this holds up on the worst alleys for three to five years, we can build that into our annual seal coat program and touch it for a fraction. It won't be $30 per square yard every year. It'll probably be closer to less than $5 per square on about a five-year cycle is what we're targeting with our other surface treatment programs. So we're going to be monitoring this. We did a couple little differences between each three alleys to kind of see what we thought was going to hold up best. And the premise is, is if this ends up holding up and lasting for three to five years without major failures and something that we can kind of react to, you know, more sparingly, we would extrapolate this through the rest of the alleys within the subdivision because they're all in much better shape than these three. So I just wanted to update you on that. It took a lot of collaboration from Public Works, the contractor and the HOA to kind of come up with this and this is, you know, above and beyond what we had proposed in the CIP initially and we were able to work it in with our Public Works operating budget and our existing surface treatment budgets. So any questions?
Sharice?
How old is the Savannah Green development?
About 20 years.
Okay, okay.
Chris?
Quick question, Tim. Looking at the finished product photo, is that loose gravel or is it kind of held?
So, yeah, so essentially what happens with the seal coat is you, you don't like, hot mixed asphalt or cold mixed asphalt is mixed. It's mixed oil and rock and aggregates and then they lay it down and pave it and it hardens up. This is basically like you're mixing it on-site. You go and you do a shot of oil down the road, you do a shot of rock down the road, shot of oil down the road, shot of rock down the road, and you sweep up the loose fine. So what it's like today is it's going to be seemingly very close to like a grittier than normal asphalt surface, you know, but the initial is, you know, a rock or an oil then a rock layer, oil-rock layer, and there's some loose aggregate that we continue to sweep up through there to make sure we pick up all those loose fines. So, you know, probably after a month or two, people are not going to know the difference between an asphalt road and this. It's going to be a little bit more gritty than that. You know, you'll have better traction probably than some. But yeah, it's not necessarily cohesively mixed. It's kind of mixed on the ground.
Okay, is it going to endure snow plows and, you know, that kind of rough treatment?
We do this on lots of our roads. You know, I think over 10 or 15% of our roads get this type of treatment. And the difference between this and like doing like a rehabilitation project is if you do it in a timely manner, it's truly preventative maintenance. It's like a wellness check with your doctor. You go and everything's good, we don't have to do anything major. What we've converted to since I've been here is to a five-year cycle on these things, typically with seal coat, surface treatment type things, they last anywhere from three to seven years, depending on use, wear and tear of the roads, things like that. We're trying to commit to a five-year cycle so that we're, you know, some things may need a little sooner and we don't quite get to them, but some things, you know, could go a little bit longer, but if we can commit to something in the middle, we think that we're going to be able to keep all of that preserved for a much longer period. And it just, it becomes a cyclical process where we just, anything that's seal coated, we hit it every five years.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the update from staff. Really appreciate having an update on this and seeing the pictures and really appreciate the flexibility and coordination with the HOA on this and trying to do what we can, utilizing efficiently our Public Works staff and the contractor. And just wanted to point out slash ask confirm, you're saying, so the Public Works prep, you said digging down because that was part of the problem, right, was that the soil was not compact for these alleys enough when they were built? Isn't that right? So that's why like these 20-year-old alleys are in kind of worse condition because the soil underneath was part of the problem. Is that right?
So it's the base is what it is. It's not necessarily soil. It's soil that's been stabilized, but the issue primarily with that is moisture. So the attempt here is to keep that moisture out of there. If we can keep the moisture out of there, you have less freeze-thall impacts, like you can see in this 2021 picture, plenty of cracks and opportunity for water to seep into that base to keep it more high, you know, hydraulic, I'll say, that when the freeze-thall cycles hit, that pavement comes up and down more. You know, we're going to see how it holds up. We don't know. That's why we're calling it a pilot plan because typically, you know, we wouldn't do a lot of this stuff on concrete roads, but the other part of that is, that's with the premise that concrete roads aren't in the shape. You know, that's the premise that we're sealing all of our joints and concrete roads and patching things in a timely fashion, which it's supposed to happen, and we just have not had budget for that for decades and we don't keep up on that. So that's, you know, we talked, I talked with a couple different pavement management, you know, consultants out there about what they thought, you know, we could do and the idea was, you know, start with this and potentially there's some more advanced surface treatments that, a Cape Seal is something that's used where you do a chip seal and then you do a micro-surface, which is more of a fine grit, asphallic material layer that even seals better than a seal coat itself. So you do a seal coat with that on top of it. So that may be an option at some point, but a micro-surfacing, we need quantity to do that. We're not even going to get the micro-surfacing contractors to come unless we have quantity that's happening in our area, so.
What we're doing here is trying to address the literal underlying problem of the alleys, of the kind of layer beneath it and then building on top.
Not, not this pilot plan. This pilot plan is trying to keep water from getting into that to prevent further degradation.
Okay, so that Public Works prep work, you're not digging down and rep, prepping that bottom layer?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That is essentially, this is essentially what I would call like a leveling layer. So we're trying to level out and grade over the stuff that you see in 2021, 2022, 23. We came through here with a mill and essentially planed some of that stuff out to get a workable surface and then we put a tack coat down, which is, you can see like a black asphalt material there on the edges. That's a tack coat that then when we put this low-grade asphalt mix on it, that tacks to that and then we rolled in place and then we seal coat over that. It's essentially putting like a liquid Band-Aid over something, a high-class liquid Band-Aid, I'll say. The idea is trying to keep water out of that base so we reduce the impacts of the freeze-thall cycles from creating further degradation. And we'll see, but we're doing this for $30 a square yard versus $150 per square yard where we wouldn't be able to touch any of these alleys.
So this is just the patching? This is not the full replacement plans? Because some of that is also planned, right?
Yes, so patching. Full-depth patching is still happening. That contract is happening. It's essentially, they went out and marked things out today and they'll start construction within the next couple of weeks and it'll last less than a month. That's full-depth spot patching for places that were essentially, you know, like, not to say like these, you would recommend full-depth patching for these things, but we couldn't afford it. We couldn't have done all three of these alleys plus all the other spot patches. So we decided to do all the spot patches in all the alleys that were in fair to good condition other than the spot patches. And then we're trying a pilot plan on these to see if this works because if this, if this holds up on these alleys, we're going to be able to do this over all of the rest of the alleys. If not, all of these alleys are going to be very costly over a very long period of time.
And then is the full patching, full-depth patching in those spots, the full replacement to the underlying bottom of it?
Correct. We're digging it all out and putting all new in, tying the new concrete to adjacent concrete.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
James?
Yes, yeah, everybody, yeah, and some of that's, so a lot of the surface, yeah, so a lot of the surface treatments, it's not a sophisticated thing. It's aggregate and oil. You know, you can have different combinations of that stuff. A lot of it becomes kind of what products are available because people aren't producing aggregate products for these purposes typically. You know, in 15 years ago, everybody used, you know, crushed limestone, white rock, angular, and it turned to dust real quick. And county roads, it was fine because nobody cared about the dust out there. In urban settings, everybody hated it very much and went away from it. Then they went to pea gravel and it was readily available. And they used to do boiler slag, which is a much finer grit that you would see, like, usually on like county highways, you would see it kind of like sparkles a little bit. But it was a byproduct. You know, steel companies weren't producing that slag material for our use on roads. It was just what was left over when they were done with their product. And that's what this product is. This is still steel slag. We're just kind of subject to what is available. Urbana switched to using steel slag as aggregate, I'm going to guess, seven or eight years ago, because boiler slag was not available and people like that. This was kind of the next thing that was available, was a little bit larger, more like the old stone that they were using. And what we've had to date has been very successful. It holds up. A lot of the stuff has more fines in it so that it rides smoother than some of the old angular and pea gravel type aggregate. But yeah, that's, this is, if you've seen a lot of what the county's done recently, they're using the same product. And the A1 versus A2, it's just multiple lifts. So most people are just doing an A1, which is a single shot of oil, a single shot of rock aggregate. And A2 is just doing two of those. They have other alternatives where you can do a fog coat, where you do a fog of oil over top of it to help bind some of those loose aggregates in that you're not sweeping as much. But just kind of depends on what you're using and the application rates.
Thank you.
Dale?
I just want to say thank you to the whole team for the creativity. I think, you know that I was a little resistant because I felt like we went from promising a lot to not quite enough. And I think this is a really creative attempt, right? And I think that for our residents to see that even when there are challenges with, you know, what we might want to be able to do, that the city staff is willing to work so hard to come up with a solution, I think that really speaks to everybody on staff. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I'm pretty proud of everybody that was involved in this.
Chris?
I want a motion that the Public Works Department is eligible for ice cream.
There soon will be an ice cream store on Main Street. Well, I would also add the tremendous cooperation and enthusiasm from the Savannah Green residents, the HOA. They really worked very closely with city staff, pointing out the worst spots. And it was a great collaborative effort. So thank you to everybody.
That was interesting with the HOA meeting. By the time we were done, they were pointing out what we were patching and what we weren't.
Well, they drive it every day.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
We, any other reports of officers? Nope. There is no new business before this body. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Chandra.